Good evening, everyone. If you could just take a moment and silence your cellphones. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one proclamation tonight, and Councilwoman Julie Mayfield is going to present it. This is Better Buses Together Month, and Amy Cantrell, and whoever else you would like to bring up with you, please come forward.
Since they're all there, should I just be here? Okay, great. Well, I am so happy to be able to read this resolution. As many of you know, transit was kind of my thing before I got on council. It's still kind of my thing. And I am very happy to have had the opportunity to work with Just Economics and the campaign for the 19-point agenda and the People's Transit Campaign. We've gotten some good work done together. You guys have done amazing work on your own and in partnership with the city. And it's just, it's nice to be able to celebrate some successes. Whereas we recognize that transportation is a right that should be afforded to all residents of Asheville, and that it allows community members and that it allows community members the ability to have access to work opportunities, education, healthcare, food, and recreation. And whereas the City of Asheville has begun its transit master planning process and seeks input from all the residents of Asheville to create a robust public transit system. And whereas the People's Transit Campaign has partnered with the City of Asheville since its inception in 2012 to build better buses together. And whereas this December marks the fifth year anniversary of the People's Transit Campaign, and also marks the completion of the Campaign's 19-point People's Agenda on Public Transit for Asheville. And whereas community members participating in Just Economics Voices for Economic Justice Group believed that necessity riders could lift their voices and work together to make positive change to our transit system. And whereas the People's Transit Campaign of Just Economics will continue to support necessity bus riders in leading everyone in our community to work with the City of Asheville to build better buses together. Now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim December 2017 as Better Buses Together Month in the City of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to celebrate with festivities appropriate to the situation. One of which would be, get on the bus, everybody. Thanks very much. Congratulations.
I'm Amy Cantrell, and I just want to introduce these, some of my heroes and she-ros of this work. Calvin Allen, who is now on the Transit Committee, was one of the originators of this campaign. Julia McDowell and James Gambrell, a couple of our other originators. And Sabrina, who's been with us almost from the beginning, and her son Waylon. And imagine doing this really amazing work as a single mom. So, it's really awesome. Waylon's been on the campaign almost as long as the rest of us, so we're very grateful. And then Vicki Meath is Director of Just Economics, and Carmen Ramos Kennedy is our Living Wage Certification Program Coordinator. So, all of us are here tonight. James and Julie, I know y'all have something to say real quick.
Hello, folks. I'm James Gambrell.
And I'm Julia McDowell.
Okay. So, um, yeah, that's fine. All right. So, hey there. Wait a minute, because we've got to do something real quick. Good evening. Mr. North. Okay. Good evening. I am James Gambrell. I already covered that.
James, I'm going to speak to your microphone.
Okay. Here, you want to talk to the mic?
Um, Julia McDowell.
Okay, I'll hold the mic for you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Since the fall of 2012, we have been working to build better buses with the City of Asheville.
Mayor and City Council, it is honored to receive this from you tonight and publicly declare victory on our 19-point agenda for transit.
Yep, so, we thank, we, yeah, we thank to, we, oh, we want, yeah, we want to talk, we want to thank City Council, city staff, and bus drivers, and all the drivers who have participated with us in making our People's Transit Campaign a success.
As a bus rider, we know that a strong public transit system benefits our community as a whole. Better transit means a healthier community. Better transit means economic mobility. Better transit means access to jobs, housing, and education.
We ask the people, we ask that people all over our city continue to join us in the People's Transit Campaign as we continue to work our transit that works for the people.
We also want to invite members of the council, Asheville community, to Just Economics Annual Celebration on December the 7th, 6:30 to 9 at Jubilee, 46 Wall Street. There, we will celebrate transit as a civil rights, remembering Rosa Parks and the Montgomery Bus Boykow, and celebrating the victory of our public People's Transit Celebration Campaign.
All right, thank you. And we will hope to help join us in building better buses together. Building buses together. Woo!
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have no other proclamations for tonight. We do have a consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments on the consent agenda? I will note one item. Our regularly scheduled meeting for December 12th will be pushed back to December 19th since December 12th is the first night of Hanukkah. I realize we're pushing it back to the last night of Hanukkah, but there really wasn't any other way to do it. And also, just note that the, which isn't on here, the swearing-in for new council members will be on December 5th in the chambers here at 4 o'clock.
I have some questions for item G.
Okay, go ahead.
Which is the resolution authorizing city manager to enter contract with Asheville Staffing for temporary employee services. Just a few questions. Would like to know possibly for the future and also maybe tonight. The service, the temporary services that Asheville Staffing would provide is a $96,000 contract annually that can be renewed with a two-year option, I'm assuming here. And would like to know, can these services in the future be filled by city staff? And if so, why haven't we done so? And if their cost offsets, if that could be explained?
Hey, Brown, the parking services manager for the city.
End of radio fame. I keep hearing you on the radio.
Thank you. We want to get those grads to field. The reason we use the temporary staffing is the, I don't want to say erratic nature, but the irregular nature of when we need them. My friend Chris Corle does a wonderful job filling up the U.S. Savior Center, but it's not every day. And we primarily use these temporary staffers to do our special event parking. They may be days like for the Warren Haynes concert. We're probably going to need nine or 10 that night. Tonight, we don't need any. So, it's a way for us to have the flexibility to bring staff in when we need it and not pay for it when we don't need it. In the future, there may be times we could add a city staffer to cover some of this, but at the current time, I'd recommend we still do it this way as that gives us the most flexibility at the most reasonable cost for us.
Ease of nature and everything, flexibility.
Yes.
I was looking on here, and we chose Asheville, looks like we're going to choose Asheville Staffing at $14.70 per hour. Now, is that what they pay their employees, or is that the contract price, and then they divvy out what they pay their employees?
That's the price we pay them.
Right.
I don't know exactly what they pay their employees for what task.
Do we know if they pay their employees a living wage?
I don't know that. And I've not asked that question since we can't require a living wage.
Right. We can't require it, but is that something that we can ask in the future?
Well, I think that our opinion to date has been that if we ask it, and they answer it, and they don't get the contract, that it certainly looks like we considered it. So, we have consulted with the School of Government, who has advised us not to do that.
Can I ask a related question? Which is, even if they don't, I can't believe I'm going to say this on public and on TV, can we, can we say that it's important for us to pay people a living wage? And even if they come in, if we ask, and they say, "We pay people $10 an hour," and we say, "Well, we want you to pay a living wage, so therefore, we're going to pay," our part of our contract with you is that when we pay you, you will pay your people a living wage, and we will pay more for that?
I don't, we don't know. Let's give our attorneys some time to research the hypotheticals. Yeah, let's, let's look at that.
Well, I think that's the concern, right?
That is, that is my concern. My concern is that, you know, this is what we're paying them, you know, $14.70 per hour, but, you know, they may pay their employees $8 an hour. I don't know. We don't know, and it seems like we can't ask, but that's going to be, and it's been, it's been through the School of Government that said that we shouldn't ask that, but Julie makes a good point as well.
Well, there's a statute saying that we can't consider it, so once you ask it, I think it becomes, you know. So, if, if the goal, though, is, I mean, we've struggled with this ever since the legislature banned cities from requiring a living wage of contractors. But obviously, the goal is to make sure employees are making a living wage. We can do that if they're city employees, if they're contract employees were challenged to do that. So, is there a way where we could explore this at more depth with more time, maybe, at a subcommittee level? Just kind of look at options.
Look at hiring more city employees instead of contracting out.
Whether that's the, whether that's the answer.
I mean, I think that's the better solution.
Well, I think what Harry is saying is the challenge here is there, the employees are so, it's not really even seasonal, it's more on occasion-to-occasion basis. I mean, I hear what you're saying.
But we have city employees at the Civic Center that that's the same case, do we not, that are temporary and safer?
You know, I don't know. And I'm not looking to try to figure all this out right here, right now. I'm just suggesting, in terms of being able to talk about this some more, where would we want to refer to finance, or? Well, and we can look at it, too, and come up with some options for you. I mean, we've had some, some other situations where, you know, as long as we have existing city employees that aren't bumped into overtime or something like that, you know, there may be some who can do it. And so, we can come up with sort of some, some legal options as well. So, we're glad to work on that.
So, that's, that's great. I'm going to make a personal statement here and ask that item G be considered separately. And the reason I'm saying that is because moving forward, I don't think I'm going to be able to support, now, we can't ask these people if they're, if they're paying a living wage, but considering that some of these places are here in Asheville, they should know the standard that we are trying to set right now for a living wage in the City of Asheville. And I can give faith, support, any business that's, that we're contracting with that won't pay a living wage. So, I'm going to ask that, even though we can't ask.
Well, we don't know whether or not they are, and I don't know.
I would hope that they would volunteer that coming, moving forward, so we don't have to ask it.
I don't know if they can. Can they do that? I mean, could? Can we, we can't ask. Not, I know we can't ask it, but can they, can they just volunteer the information? I'm sure they could just volunteer it. I would just caution everyone to, you know, make sure that we don't send the wrong message and find ourselves, you know.
Well, right. I think my personal message is a good message. I'm going to ask that it be considered separately, and I would be voting against it.
Any other questions about this item? I know we have some questions about other items. Nope? Okay. Okay, any other items, questions, comments?
Could we have item F for a separate vote, please?
Uh huh, yes. Keith, your item was G, right? Okay. What other, any other items?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F.
And item G.
And item G.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda excluding item F and G. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Who wants to go first?
So, as far as item G goes, when does this contract go into effect?
Harry, do you know, before he's gotten settled, when it goes into effect?
Once you approve it, people go process the contract, and then get them signed, and then we'll decide.
What date of?
First January.
Date effective you were hoping would be first of January?
Okay, do you want to do item F first, Gordon, or should we go ahead and do item G?
What's the duration of the contract?
So, Harry, you probably need to come up if we're going to.
I think you stated it was one year.
Yeah. Why don't we do this? Why don't we take item G and move it to the December, what did we just change our state to? 19th agenda? And see if we can get some more information?
Move to, move item G to the December 19th agenda?
Second.
Okay, do we, do we not, okay, we're being very formal about it. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We moved the item. Okay, Gordon?
So, I pulled item F for a couple of different reasons. One is because there was some confusion over the matrix that came forward in regards to the Food Action Plan. And another, because it's just a really important big deal for the city, and I wanted the opportunity to highlight it. Mayor, there's some folks here from the Food Policy Council who have been working on this stuff for years, long before there was a Food Policy Council, to be honest. And they're here tonight. I'm not sure how many folks are here to speak on it.
Maybe, maybe raise your hands.
Looks like there's a few. And to kind of tee this up, before folks come up, the Food Policy Council that began coming together in 2011, 2012, brought forth the Food Action Plan back in 2013. I may be getting some of these dates wrong. And we've since been working toward a more full understanding of what we can do and a more, and a more full implementation of doing it. This council made it a priority at its strategic retreat two years ago, and the product from the Food Policy Council, from our own city staff, and from other partners is before us tonight. There are a lot of pieces to this action plan because there are a lot of pieces to the, the whole food ecosystem. And so, when we were trying to figure out, how are we going to approach all of these important pieces of our food systems, it became pretty evident pretty quickly that you can't prioritize everything, or nothing becomes the priority, and it's easy to drop balls. So, as we took more time with this and took a look at it, we decided to prioritize a couple of very important pieces, knowing that the rest of the pieces are also going to be coming together, but we had to figure out what to do first. And so, what we've prioritized out of this broad plan are, first and foremost, growing more food in the City of Asheville. You will, as a result of the vote tonight, assuming this passes tonight, you will see more food growing on our greenways, at our community centers, in our parks, and hopefully with our partners in other public spaces as well. You're going to see that we have an array of partners who are ready to help us do this. And this Food Action Plan is going to help us see food come out of the ground, and fundamentally change the way that people in Asheville experience food in the city. Secondly, the, second prioritization piece here that'll be happening concurrently with all the planting and growing is going to be doing an assessment of our assets and resources and a creation of metrics for all of the other priority areas, so we can set some hard, concrete goals that we haven't done up until now. And so, over the course of the next 12 months, it'll be planting, partnering, growing, and doing this assessment and creation of metrics, so we can move forward beyond that. I am really grateful to everyone who has put their heads together to bring this to us tonight, because this has been created by a very broad, lengthy community process, as well as the efforts of Amber Weaver in our Sustainability Department, as well as other members of staff, because, as you know, this cuts across all the departments as far as how we get this done. So, that's, with my gratitude, I'd like to open the floor to anyone who'd like to speak on it.
How about that was a motion, and?
Second.
Second. And we have a motion and a second. Okay. Anybody? Go, please. Just state your name, watch the lights, you'll have three minutes. Maggie will set the clock. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Kira Bullan. I'm the Coordinator for the Asheville Bunkin' Food Policy Council. I'm excited to see this on your agenda tonight and appreciate the time. First, I just want to start with an appreciation of the authentic partnership that did go into the development of this document. There was a lot of community input, as Gordon mentioned. It was a year-long process. We had started with a survey, we went through a number of revisions. We've talked to community stakeholders, business leaders in the food industry, nonprofit sectors, growers, community gardens, and urban agriculture here in the city. I want to appreciate the Office of Sustainability for their flexibility and focus, and Gordon's leadership in bringing this forward. The growing food is the tip of the iceberg here. We want to be able to put the seeds in the ground, we want to be able to appreciate the work that is already going on. There's incredible work. There are community centers, there's gardens happening at Stevens Lee, there's neighborhood coordinators that are spreading the word in a really grassroots way, even within the city department. So, our first step is to appreciate and elevate that work that's already going on. So, getting growing food is really the tip of the iceberg. And as we think about these metrics, as we, as we go forward in assessments and benchmarking, it's giving the City of Asheville the opportunity for visionary leadership. And that's really a place that we can hold, not only in Western North Carolina, but in the state of North Carolina. There are food policy councils around the state, we're part of a wider network. We've tapped into that for, for resources as we've put this plan together. And also, they're looking to us. They look to the 2013 plan, those 14 points that, that were at the time also visionary, and, you know, we put that forward, we've been working towards it and realizing that we just haven't been able to do enough. We need to dig a little deeper, we need to ask ourselves as the community leadership and also the city leadership to, to set the stakes a little higher. And so, that's what we're doing with this plan. And there are food policy councils and city and county governments around the state who are looking to us and excited about the plan that's coming forward. So, that's kind of our next step. This benchmarking, the asset development, understanding our metrics better allows us this opportunity to do some regional systems thinking. Yes, we're focused on the city. We're asking the city to approve this plan at the city level. And also, it has an important, it has an important role, pivotal role, in our, in our regional food system. It's a complicated system. And so, this digging deeper over the next two years to think about the metrics here, that's going to allow us to really take, take the reins on that visionary leadership. So, we appreciate the opportunity, we're, we're proud to be able to put this document forward, and, and thank you for your consideration of it today.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item?
Hey, y'all. I'm Gabrielle White, and I'm here on behalf, behalf of Patchwork Urban Farms. So, I came on as the third grower. I'm a perennial grower, so think trees and bushes, fruits and nuts, think long-term. I wanted to thank you for your help. It was prior my time with the Community Development Block Grant, I believe it was called. Y'all helped make that happen, and that really pushed us forward to be able to develop some infrastructure and push us into what we're becoming right now, which is a cooperative. And we're really excited about this, and wanted to just highlight a couple of the things, being water, land, and what I'll call ether, or community. So, for water, there was, part of the Food Policy Council has the water cluster, and they were working to find out agriculture rates. And I think Guan might have been the most attached to that. So, that hasn't happened yet, but Patchwork really wants it to move forward, so we're going to work this winter to find that information and, I believe, get it to Guan. And then, hopefully, the city can help us with an agricultural rate for water, which will really help the vision, which is many farmers growing throughout and all of Asheville. So, the next part is land. So, for land, we're really hoping to continue to partnership with the city, and for the city to have that awareness in, in the minds of, be it trade, barter, or a lease agreement. We would be really interested in that. Myself particularly, because if I'm looking at putting in some chestnuts in the ground, and this is a 20-year, 15-year operation, I need sites like schools or, or the city to be able to have faith that those things will come into fruition. And then, for the ether part of it, the community building, we're, the last part is just, is the partnerships and what we're hoping to build, which is infrastructure as far as every, we hope that every part, every community, every part of the city will be able to have a neighborhood that has infrastructure to support food, the storage of it, the drying of it, facilities like that. So, we're just, we're really hoping that the city's mind is open to helping Patchwork, being in partnership with Patchwork, to be creating these, these systems like food kitchens and storage facilities, be it a cold cellar, which is non-electric or electric things like refrigerators. So, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Heimbaugh. I'm with Bountiful Cities and also the Asheville Bunkin' Food Policy Council. And I just wanted to say a few quick things. First of all, I wanted to say how much we really appreciate the partnership and the work that we've done this year with the Office of Sustainability in the City of Asheville. That work has been really phenomenal, and we really feel like we have a true ally there. We really appreciate working with Amber so much, and all of her work on this has been really phenomenal. I also want to say that I appreciate the work of the Food Policy Council Coordinator, Kira Bullan, who spoke recently, two speakers ago. She's put just an incredible amount of effort into this. She's brought so much expertise, so much experience, and an incredible kind of professional maturity to this work that we really appreciate. And I want to say thank you to the City of Asheville, because it is through the partnership with the City of Asheville that that position, that coordinator spot, is supported. And so, it is partly due to the support that we received from you all, that this work has been able to move forward at the pace and with the expertise that it's been able to do over this last year. Of course, in partnership with so many organizational, community partners, and the rest of the Food Policy Council. So, I wanted to really thank you all for that. And I wanted to say that growing food is something that's really exciting and important. And as a member of Bountiful Cities, a representative of Bountiful Cities, this is some work that's been near and dear to our heart and work for a long time, something like 18 years. And so, one piece of this Food Action, Food Policy Action Plan that we're really excited about is the idea of recognizing and lifting and supporting those partnerships of the work that's already happening, not just through organizations like Bountiful Cities, but also many other organizations that are out there doing the work and have a real opportunity now to come together and be supported in partnership with the help of the city. So, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for speaking on this item, and thank you, Gordon, for shepherding this to this point. This is amazing. Who's going to pick this up? Have you designated your successor?
Well, and I think that it's a good question. And, you know, like I said, at the Strategic Planning Retreat two years ago, everyone, every member sitting here today made it clear that this was a priority. And if it's to remain a priority, it'll be because of your voices carrying it forward. The community's ready to go. The, it's up to us to kind of play catch-up right now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have completed the consent agenda. Thank you all for coming. We have several presentations and reports. The first one is regarding AAA bond rating from Moody's Investor Services. Barbara Whitehorn, our Finance Director, will give us this presentation slash report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Barbara Whitehorn, Chief Financial Officer for the city. I would like to introduce Doug Carter with DEC Associates. He is our financial advisor. For those of you that have not met him, I think everyone here's met him, though, but he'll be talking about the AAA rating.
Thank you, Barbara. Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, the City of Asheville, Mr. Manager, Madam Attorney, Madam Clerk, great to be here. I'm amazed that every time I step in this room, I feel stateliness and history, and I think, I hope you always have that, the paintings are beautiful. We stood before you September of 2015, and reported to you that you had received Standard and Poor's AAA credit rating. And now I stand before you and say that slightly over two years later, you now have Moody's AAA credit rating. And I'm going to take just a little time to talk to you about that, and give you a few statistics that you might find interesting as part of that process. When you see the agenda at my scary, it's not going to take that long. I'm from Ardell County, but I speak rapidly. We're going to talk about why the, what is the rating, what is the importance, what do they say about Asheville to have these, what happens with infrastructure and economic development, how do you maintain what you've earned, and the role of policymaking and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on a credit rating, because I don't want to repeat what many of you know, because you all have a credit rating, and if you call the Credit Bureau, they tell you your score. In this particular case, it's not scored by numbers, it's scored by letters, and triple is the best, A is in the middle, and when you get below triple B or double B, not many people will buy your credit. And so the credit rating relates to your debt, and how you sell it, and how people want to buy it in terms of their understanding and belief that you will pay them. I'm going to give you three or four facts, right now, about Asheville that I think makes you really special, and that you may have heard before or might not have. You are one of the smallest cities rated as a AAA by Moody's Investor Service. Moody's is the oldest, and from that standpoint, offers a lot of credibility, because it's been around the longest. You are one of the smallest cities with a AAA credit rating from Moody's, and the other small cities that generally have them are wealthy suburbs of New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, and other major cities in the country, the rich towns. But you are rich in many other things, and I think that's what brings to the table how you get a credit rating. You, at the current time, have 160,000 per capita appraised value. Now what does that mean? How does that compare? Your per capita appraised value is higher than Charlotte, Raleigh, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Durham, and the only cities in this state that have a higher value would be beach towns. And so that value gives you a strength that many cities do not have, and I think is why you, as a smaller city than some of the others I have mentioned, brought you to the table. Your CIP is currently, or will be, once you make the investments that are already in your capital budget, will take you at around $2,000 per capita. That is moderate levels of debt. When compared to some of your other sister cities, like my home city of Charlotte, you would be far less than they would be, they are way more than that, they're also rated AAA. So you are generally the smallest, you have high per capita appraised values, and you've managed your debt burdens very well. Why have a high credit rating? Why would you want one? It gives you lowest interest cost, that results in your lower cost of borrowing. I've had people say, "How much do we save? How much in interest rate?" Well, a lot of that depends on how high interest rates are. Right now, interest rates are very low in general, so the spread, or the difference between a AAA and a AA is not nearly as large, it's maybe 25 basis points, maybe a quarter, not nearly as large as it's going to be when we have 5% interest rates again, and they are on their way, unfortunately, I'm afraid. So bottom line is, is you get this lower cost of borrowing, I think what may be even more important than the lower cost of borrowing is access to lenders, both public and private. For many of you, you remember 2008, it was not a good time, the access to lenders was very difficult. So being the best of the best, you get the greatest access, you also get a greater ability to alternatively structure your debt, and to use the most cost-effective structures. It puts you in an exclusive club of membership. You are the best of the best, and now you're best of the best to both of the agencies that rate you. Finally, it gives you respect, and I think you've earned that, and we all like it, I think. What does Moody's say about you? You have a continuing strengthening of your financial position, you have a healthy and diverse local economy, they are particularly happy to see a major university in the city, and mentioned, I know there are others in the area, but mentioned the University of North Carolina Asheville. They believe that you have a prudent management record, and that you adhere to your, their word, conservative, I prefer prudent, fiscal policies, and they believe that your current limited debt burden, and you have a manageable pension position. What does DEC say, your financial advisory firm? I think you've gotten this, in addition to what they say, because of your emphasis on planning, your ability to do city infrastructure improvements, your partnerships in economic development. We just heard about a partnership in food, so I think you, as a city, are somewhat known for partnerships. The one with respect to economic development, they really drill down and see is extremely important. You have strong financial and operational management, and policies surrounding them. You, as a council, coupled with your management, both understand the meaning of what it means and what it takes to be the best, and that isn't always the case. So I think this blending between the policymakers and the managers on an understanding of what that means is exceedingly important. You've involved the public. Your bond election, coupled with other community involvement, says there is a confidence level. And then finally, another thing that I think's extremely important for you, is you are the core driver of the Western North Carolina economy. Your leadership in regional efforts, in moving regional efforts forward are important, but you also embody urbanism, and what urbanism means, how the core makes great things happen for a larger region. The city economy and how it performs is really the only rating factor that you don't directly control. You can be a partner, you can make investments, but the economy is the economy. You can do what you can, but it pretty well does what it does. So bottom line, what you have done in infrastructure improvements, particularly of late, in your more aggressive look at your infrastructure and capital needs, and how you make investments and strategies within your economic development is something that's extremely important. As I said to you, you can't control it, but how you engage with it makes you one of the best of the best. Moody's spoke about the positives of your current capital plans, including your infrastructure, both from a geo and a non-geo side, and they gave us this upgrade, full well understanding that your current capital program, or investments in the next five to six years exceed $200 million, which for Asheville is a considerable number, and a good number. Somebody used to say to me when I was City Finance Director in Charlotte, "How is it we have more debt than the city of Atlanta, and we have a AAA credit rating and they We had more facilities and issued more debt to get facilities so we could provide services. So low levels of debt is not always a high criteria for credit rating, it's proper investments. What do you need to do to maintain the ratings? Keep doing what you're doing. The AAA rating that you receive from both of your rating agencies have a two-year lookout, and what they look at is they want you to continue to demonstrate your strong management and budgetary performance, and they would expect you to keep your reserve levels, your liquidity, your fund balances at similar levels that you have now. Liquidity is very important to them. 2008 taught the lesson of what happens if cities have inadequate liquidity, and the best of the best habit. We, as your financial advisor, don't see the rating changing in the two years, and I would finish by saying, "Planning, planning, planning." That's how you maintain it. Community, capital, long-term. Is that my time?
Yeah.
Because we're almost finished?
Yeah.
Okay. The final thing before the conclusion is how does the role of strong or sound policymaking and management, I mentioned that to you earlier, how does this important and why? If you broadly define or look at what is sound for management and policymaking, it includes several elements. These are defined not only by those of us who work in this business, but also by the rating agency. First is governance. How does your governance process work? How do you use your committees and your policy structure to make things happen, and how effective and how operationally sound is what you do? How do you perform your operational management? How do you do budgetary and financial management? I said in the finance committee earlier today, y'all received an update on finances. That doesn't happen in a lot of cities but once a year. You're going to hear it four times a year. That's very important. You provide support for economic improvement, and yes, the Doug Carter planning thing, that's all part of it. I would say that Asheville's professional staff have made such a strong contribution to getting this rating, and will contribute greatly to keeping it. I think in particular, your finance department has just performed unbelievable things in a short time period to move us to this level, obviously under the management of your city manager. I think the city council, by its contributions, by defining policy and appropriating the money, have also done your role in an appropriate way, and I think you've accomplished a great deal, and this is why it's taken you to the AAA rating in terms of your policymaking and management. And then, to close, I want to say this, and I've said this a couple of times, thinking about this. At the Great Depression, we all know what happened in Asheville. You were the biggest city, you were one of the most well-known cities of the country, you had a lot of debt. The Great Depression happened, the debt didn't get paid on time. You issued significant refunding bonds through the auspices of the newly-created Local Government Commission, which is still to this day unique in the United States, and you paid those off a number of years ago. But I think the lesson to be learned for this, for those of us who are history buffs, it takes about 100 years to get your AAA back, and you've done that, and I applaud you.
Done.
And I think each of you ought to feel grateful that you've had a part in that role. And I'm willing to answer whatever questions you have.
One question that occurs, you said, you were talking about valuation of 160,000 per capita, and comparing it to other cities. That's based on the taxable property in the city?
That is correct.
Yeah.
It is your gross value divided by the number of citizens inside the city.
Right. I note that all three that you mentioned are tourist towns, and probably all have unsustainable rent problems, and is that because the valuations are so high? I mean, if the property values are high, the rents are high. It seems like, it struck me that all three were tourist towns.
It was.
And two beach towns.
What were the other two?
Well, in North Carolina, those that are higher than you tend to be beach towns.
Yeah.
And they tend to be high because of the cost of beachfront property.
They're smaller, they have...
And they're very small. They don't have your populations.
That's the smaller towns, and you're saying the AAA bond rated other cities are large.
Yes, the other AAA rated, you listen, thank you. The other AAA rated towns have tended to be wealthy suburbs of large cities.
Right.
With respect to the 160, just to explain it to you, and I don't have a breakdown for you now, but a lot of cities also, with a high per capita appraised value, have high investment in businesses inside their city. So I think there's a combination of forces that makes that per capita appraised value what it is, not singularly the value of residential property.
Right. And I have one other comment, and this is that I was amused during the recent election campaign to hear a lot of chatter about how badly Asheville handles money, and I think this is...
Yeah, where were you, like? Yeah, how come we didn't get this rating about a month and a half ago?
I think this city's management especially has done really, really well, and I suppose council has had some hand in guiding that, but I hope people in the city are listening, we're not wasting your tax money.
You have an independent third party that has a strong economic incentive to get this right, so the economic study that they undertake is not at a macro level, it is at a micro level, and at least from the experts in the field of how cities are run and managed, their finances and their operational management, you rate with the best.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Barbara, we have you back up here for the quarter operating. Is this an actual presentation, or just a link? What was that? I can't tell.
Hi, Council, Mayor, Barbara Whitehorn again. Let me get my presentation up here. Okay, so y'all have received in your packets the first quarter financial report, and that is, we give you, sorry, we give you a financial report quarterly, so that you can have an idea of where we stand during the year, and where we expect to end the year. And in the financial report for the first quarter, we looked at the adopted budget, what amendments we've made, where we're coming in on revenue, where we're coming in on expenditures, and then our sort of anticipated budget performance. What I'd like to point out really specifically about that anticipated budget performance is that when we're looking at that from a first quarter perspective, we are really looking at that over the last five years, and we're saying, "If revenues and expenditures look like this at the end of September, this is what they usually look like at the end of the year." Because at this point, when we only have 9% of our revenues in, we have no sales tax in as of September 30th, because that's all accrued back to the previous year, it's hard to make an informed forecast for the end of the year. So I always just want to emphasize that when we do a first quarter report, it is forecast based on limited information. So our second quarter forecasts are certainly more robust, and I would recommend that you put a lot more stock in those. But we are performing about where we would anticipate, expenditures are slightly under budget, which would be 25%, we're at 22%. Revenue is always extremely low in this first quarter, because property tax comes in generally in December and January, which is the second and third quarter of the year. You'll see revenues spike up in those two quarters, and then kind of level out through the end of the year. So we're looking at, we anticipate, on this little bit of data that we have, slightly better than budget performance for both revenues and expenditures, and a potential increase to fund balance. So performance indicators in the general fund. As I talked about, the property tax elections are primarily in December and January. Licenses and permits, sales and services, both categories are tracking approximately the same as last year, so we anticipate those will be on budget. Investment income, it may seem counterintuitive that we have predicted that our investment income will be lower than last year, even though rates are increasing, we are keeping more cash available for our capital program, and not doing the longer-term investments, because we need that cash to fund the projects we're doing. So we anticipate slightly less investment income, not significantly less, but a little bit. Salaries and wages, I would like to point out that... Salaries and wages, I would like to point out that the fire department, and I know you all have been involved in our management and trying to understand what was driving overtime and salary there, the fire department is dead on budget. In fact, 0.1% under budget for salaries and wages, because we're at 23.1% of our pay periods, because we have 26 pay periods. And police is just a little bit over budget, which is not concerning. They usually come in perfectly right. And fire is on budget. So that's the big thing I wanted to point out for that. And yay Scott, yay budget team. A lot of people have gone to a lot of work to make that happen. So, and y'all can interrupt me if you want to, but I'll just keep rolling if you don't. Our quarter one enterprise funds, Water Resources Fund, it looks like they're going to have a projected positive budget variance of about 1.5 million. Revenue from development is up, and there is an increase in water usage in commercial and multifamily that we're seeing. We're not sure what's driving that, but that's what we're seeing. And we have a projected positive budget variance of 1 million in the expenses, which is vacancy savings, and then also savings from legal fees. The Street Cut Utility Fund, and this may be one that you look at and you go, what even is that? The Street Cut Utility Fund, just especially for the community members here, is actually just a pass-through. When a utility like Duke Energy has to go out and cut one of our streets to get to a line, we fix it and then they pay us for the cost of fixing it. So you'll see that the budget will always match, but then sometimes at the end of the year, it'll be under or over, but we always collect that money because it's just a pass-through. The U.S. Cellular Center Fund is doing quite well. Four sold-out concerts out of 13 in the first quarter versus one out of nine in quarter one of the previous year. We do anticipate that they will have an overall positive budget variance of more than 300,000. They are still subsidized by the general fund, but that would reduce the amount of subsidy required. The Stormwater Fund, the adopted budget included a use of fund balance this year, and our early projection is that they will use less of the fund balance than we had anticipated. Transit Fund, as you're all aware, the 441,000 was one of our two budget amendments, and that was for the new management contract, the new model that we have in place with McDonald's. Quarter one expenses are just about spot-on, but they are significantly higher than the previous year. We did have a transition period between the management companies, so we paid them both for 90 days. And ridership so far this year is down 10%. So, don't ask me to interpret that. Parking Fund, all parking garage revenue categories are exceeding budget. The garages are doing very well. Citation revenue is down. That's for personnel turnover. Meter revenues are right in line, and we project that they'll be slightly better than budget this year as well. So capital highlights, any questions about the budget before we roll into capital? Excellent, okay. So capital highlights, these are just the few things to tell you, you know, what's going on here and there. And Jade is here if you have more questions, because I'm just kind of going to go over what he's given us. North Fork Dam improvements, this is a huge project to improve the spillway at the dam. It brings us up to state standards, and it's a really big deal. Rad tip, I know we've all heard about that like a zillion times, that's ongoing. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive improvement, that will improve the roadway and the sidewalk. And I know anybody who's been over on MLK is like, yes. Sidewalk in particular. Bonds, stakeholder meetings, and that one, I can't really speak to a whole lot. That would have to be Jade.
Internal processes.
Okay. Okay, so that's part of the internal process, and I'm sorry for not checking in on that ahead of time. The GO bond highlights, so the specific projects that we anticipate funding through the general obligation bonds that were voted on in November of last year. The total number of projects or project bundles is 32. Standalone projects are like Jake Rusher Park, Haywood Street improvements. And then we have bundled projects like courts, lighting, bus shelters, any of those that are, you know, multiple things that we do with one pot of money. In design, we have 17 projects, including the Monford Complex and traffic signals. Design contracts awarded are 1. almost 3 million. Projects under construction right now, we have two. Bus shelters, road resurfacing, we don't have any of the big standalone projects quite yet, though I guess Martin Luther King really is a pretty big one. It's included in a group of resurfacing, but it is a really big project.
There were a few highlighted in the paper today.
Excellent. I hadn't read it. All right. Total value, I thought I read the whole paper, but I could see...
Well, it was just about the engineering doing the, anyway.
Sidewalk projects.
A patent, hot creek, yeah.
Johnson.
Yeah, they were big ones, so.
Okay. So the total value of construction contracts awarded is 4.4 million to date. And that's it?
Okay.
Any questions about capital? Because if so, I'm going to go sit down and give you Jade.
Okay.
The stand-up meeting.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So our next presentation and report is from Jade, Jade Dundas, our Assistant City Manager. This is on our city council strategic priorities update.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. Jade Dundas, Interim Assistant City Manager. I'm trying to find. Okay, this is the council's strategic priorities update for essentially the first quarter of this year. Really, I wanted to touch base, you know, the vision that was established for the council priorities is Vision 2036. A lot of the information that we'll be talking about tonight, you can find on the city of Asheville's website. There's an elaborate page on this, which lists out all of the categories, the priority areas. This slide's a little bit difficult to see, but the highlights for the categories are diverse community, a well-paved and livable community, clean and healthy environment, quality affordable housing, transportation and accessibility, connected and engaged community, and smart cities. Now, in developing this presentation, we kind of felt like we could really spend a lot of time discussing the bits and pieces that are going in daily to addressing all of these areas, but felt like maybe it was better just to focus on one, and in subsequent presentations, we'd focus on other areas. But as an overarching kind of assessment of what we are doing and what you're seeing the product of this vision from staff is just on the agenda today. Through the consent agenda and the presentations, you saw these items, the food policy goals and action plans, which were approved, the bond project, the sidewalks that were just mentioned a few minutes ago. There's a design project on today's agenda that was approved. Triple-A bond rating, the day-to-day work associated with what Doug had presented and Barbara. A lot of effort goes into making these things happen on a daily basis, and these are all focused on the council priorities and goals. Broadway Affordable Housing, which you will see later on in the agenda. It is, again, part of our affordable housing strategy, which is in development, but key parts of that are being, will be addressed today. Nikki will be next in line here with presentation. She'll also walk you through the inventory. Staff had taken those, these priority areas and broken them down into key tasks. Nikki will present on the, what the inventory, the property inventory is and how that impacts our future assessments of affordable housing. Really, the area that we wanted to focus on today was diversity, diverse community, and how we, as an organization, are incorporating our, this focus into program development, project identification, and really is becoming just the thing that is really influencing a lot of the decision-making and the efforts that we're going through to try to develop that and to really make that the focus for staff development and to meet the council's goals. Again, we have, this is another piece of information, it's on our website, highlights Kimberly Archie, our new equity and inclusion manager, her work. She's really kind of leading this, a lot of this effort. And then really touches on the areas that are the focus and the intent of providing this view of, and this path forward. One of the efforts, again, organizationally, this is a big deal for us. We're really trying to incorporate this into all our thought processes and decisions, this equity focus. But we understand that this, it was going to take some focused attention as well. This group right here that you see on the slide is our core team. This group is getting together to evaluate the various processes, policies, decision-making efforts that we go through on a regular basis to try to determine how, if, how we can improve and how we can incorporate more of that equity decision and inclusion decision thoughts and focus into our, into our decision-making. Good cross-section of the organization here. Public safety is represented, HR, water representatives, just a really good cross-section of our organization. One of the highlight areas, and I would think really an area of focus that has been, has had a pretty good history of social equity and just the focus on programming, project implementation, would be Parks and Rec led by Roderick Simmons. Unfortunately, Roderick wasn't able to make it today, but Roderick shared with the rest of the staff all of the work that he had done in trying to put together programs that really put programming together and their project identification, which included this thought about equity, inclusion, and distribution of projects throughout the community that really reflected an equitable decision-making criteria. You can see, you see that in the implementation of bond projects. I think for the most part, you see the major projects that were identified are well-distributed throughout the city. But even some of the bundled packages that Barbara talked about, there was, those were specifically viewed with an equity focus. What's the best place, the most underserved areas of town that we could put this Parks investment into? And so really, a strong focus in Parks and Rec, their programming is also, has a very, a strong focus on making sure that the inclusion aspects of their programming is there. This is a little bit off of the council vision to a certain extent, but I thought it was very important to include, is our public safety. Organizationally, really looking at trying to diversify the employee base. Public safety has, it's so much a focus that they've included it as part of their departmental goals. You see in the budget, you'll see in the future budgets, that they have a strong desire to increase the diversity within their work groups. Some of the efforts that have been taken on by fire and police are specifically working with Ms. Archie in her role to help them to try to identify recruiting practices that could help to enhance and identify, help people to identify Asheville as a preferred employer. Police chief is participating in a recruiting conference, that a large portion of it will be about equity inclusion. And then they also do local outreach. There's recruiting efforts that happen at St. Eugene Church to try to outreach to other Fire has really taken an approach that with regard to, to using, or hitting, recruiting at a younger age, they're hitting middle schools, really trying to get people interested and, as youth, and really reaching out to the in-real-life, the Kala program, Girl Scouts, Fire Explorers, summer camps, a lot of work's being done. They have seen successes. The minority and female recruits that they're seeing have gone from 8% previously to the last recruiting class at 26% of female and minority. So really seeing some improvements there as well. One, recent budgeting is also, again, like I said, the project identification and the assessment of how these decisions are made with regard to the city spending our money, the information that you'll see in the upcoming budget with regard to capital and operating, has started to become a conversation in our development of those budgets as councils, where we've kind of pushed the capital, this decision-making process into the fall. We've gone through some staff retreats and discussions on that topic. One of the, equity is an actual factor in our decisions. How is this helping underserved populations? And is it, does it, do the projects have an equity focus? This kind of is not the traditional things that we look at projects for, you know, we look at them for public safety. We are including the traditional aspects of these projects, but this is also an important part that has been included in this. It was, we sat down as a department head team, talked about the impacts of the projects across the city and how the underserved parts of the community, individuals in the community might be better served by these projects. So really is becoming a part of our decision processes. We understand that we're not done. We do have work to do. The core team is an indicator of that. The inclusion initiatives, inclusion racial equity toolkit, the product of that, the product of what we do on a day-to-day basis will hopefully inform our decisions moving forward and to help us to become better at making these decisions with equity in mind. And continued engagement of stakeholders and partners within the community, really doing outreach, making sure that through presentations like this, people understand the efforts and then really are provided, allowed to provide feedback. Council will get an additional explanation of our efforts in the council retreat, really look for feedback on the process. And then also, again, as I'd said earlier, the FY '19 budget process is being developed around, with equity and inclusion in mind. And so the recommendations you see in the budget presentations will have this focus. So with that said, that concludes my presentation. And I'm happy to try to answer if you had any specific questions on the equity piece of this, but any other topics with regard to council vision.
Jade, I've got a question. And so the, there's a big matrix that we have seen of, you know, specific staff activities and that sort of thing, and it was sent to us before this meeting, I think in response to Keith's request. That's very helpful for me. It was color-coded in a way that was not completely clear to me. So my question is, so some activities were grayed out and some were not, and does the, it was not consistent about whether the gray meant that they'd been done or not been done?
I think the gray is that they've been done or they're very, we're actively working on them.
Okay, okay, great. But that's sort of what I thought, but there were some things that I thought we had done that weren't grayed out, so.
Well, and this would, just a clarifying point, these are quarterly reports.
Right.
So they're through July, August, and September.
Okay.
Same with the financial report you received earlier.
Sure.
And also the listing of bond projects. So what might have gotten done in October, November could not have been grayed out or listed in Barbara's report. Yeah. Thanks Jade.
Okay, that concludes presentations and... No, Nikki, I'm sorry, I'm shortchanging you. We were only wishing that we were done. Okay. We have one last presentation and report, and Nikki Reed is here to show us this super cool, neato database.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. I'm Nikki Reed, I'm the city's real estate program director. And tonight, I'm here to demo a new mapping tool that we've created in collaboration with IT that basically serves to be a visual inventory of all the real estate owned by the city. So we're really excited. This tool did stem from the council's strategic priorities, Goal 15 specifically, which reads "to analyze city-owned property and establish a strategy for sale or lease." And so creating this tool is a great first step to do that. And so creating this tool is a great first step to do that. So here we go. So this is the tool. Our first step was really to define a classification system. Since we have so much property, it was a good way to group parcels into a classification, to kind of group them so you could better understand what type of properties there are. We have a nice link here that will show you the database definitions. We have strategize, those properties that we're gearing towards accomplishing council's strategic goals, review, properties that need further analysis to inform their classification, monitor, these are our leased properties, operational is our city service buildings, and stewardship, that's where we have our parks and community centers. So I'll show you how that works in action here on the map, so we'll click okay. And the first thing that you see highlighted in yellow, I'm going to just move this layer list so the TV will get it, there we go. So the yellow is our strategized properties, and you'll notice that these are the parcels, these three are slated for the bond project and for potential housing, affordable housing redevelopment. And we also have the Hilliard Avenue site, the former parks maintenance that's currently working through the permit process for affordable housing. So that's how we're using this strategized classification. I'll come back to that, there's some more functionality with that, but I'm going to go ahead and show you the other parcels. So we have review here in purple, so we see some properties that are up for review. This parcel, Ashton Avenue, currently vacant, and so we want to talk about future use of that site. Then the brown are parcels that we have basically under lease. Here's a good example, right here is the property that the city leases to White Labs. And so you'll see in this pop-up, we have some more information that we populate that shows, you know, the acreage and the site name, et cetera, there. I'll keep going, I'll show you our operational properties that populate in red. Of course, a good example right here is City Hall, so that's a property that comes up under the operational feature. And then last, we'll show stewardship in blue. So there's our parks. A good example is Aston Park, or we can see Memorial Stadium. So the other thing that we wanted to do with this mapping tool is provide a portal for folks to look at more information. So we can show this very well, and that's really what we're doing with the properties in yellow, because that's where we can really provide some up-to-date information. So with Hilliard, we have a link to the website. We're working on a project page right now for that project. Right now, that link goes to the affordable housing page. We also have a public file, so in spirit of open data, we are managing a public file which we can share information. I pulled up one file already that's in the conceptual submittal, so this is actually what has been submitted to TRC right now on the redevelopment of that site. So you can open that up, this is actually, the DSD publishes this information, so we're just linking to that existing info. And there you go, that's a snapshot of their development plan. And so that's it. So we're hopeful that this information is helpful. This will go on the city's website, it will be open and available to the public. I was thinking earlier, when the Food Action Group was up, thinking of how this tool could be useful for that discussion as well on assets, et cetera. So hopefully, this will help further council's goals. So thank you so much for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you. When I came in in 2015, there was a 10-year-old document that was from 2005 that I went through that was like this thick, and this has totally brought us out of the Stone Ages into something really good. I think it's going to be really helpful to not only the council members, but to the public at large, to look at this and be able to see what projects may be coming about and online, and even for individuals who may be wanting to partner with the city in the future to develop city-owned land. This is really good work, I really appreciate everything the staff has done on this, so thank you.
Thanks.
And she pulled it off, I was nervous about an online presentation, coming together over the weekend and through the morning, so good job Nikki.
Thanks. That concludes presentations. Okay, we have a few items on our public hearings agenda. The first is going to be presented to us by Alan Gleins. This is land uses for 1568 Brevard Road. This is a piece of property with a lot of history, but was once owned by the city and is now owned by the county. So the way we have to do this, first item A1 is, doesn't require a public hearing, but we will hear the presentation, entertain a motion, and then take public comment on it, just so you know. And then the item number two does require a public hearing.
All right, nothing, it's fun for Alan to sort of tie them together when he begins, and then we'll break them up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council, members of the public, glad to be here tonight. We are asking for your consideration for this property, 1568 Brevard Road, also known as the Bent Creek property by some. It is a county-owned property, once owned by the city, and in conjunction with Henderson County, the city maintains a deed restriction for the property itself, and the deed restriction is that it be used in the future for economic development purposes. The county is requesting through the second item of this agenda to rezone that property from industrial use to residential, RM16, residential high-density, 16. Under the agreement, the inter-local agreement, it follows the general statutes 158-7.1, and the economic development purposes is focused on manufacturing enterprises, industrial and commercial uses. And so releasing this would help move the property from an industrial use to other uses, and the interest today is for more of a residential development nature for the site. It is worth noting, though, that the, that same general statute does reference that at the discretion of the governing body, a land use may also increase the population, increase the taxability of the property, or increase business prospects for the city or county. And while the residential development obviously is not focused on manufacturing or industrial uses, it could be interpreted with the other uses to increase population, maybe taxable property and business prospects for the city. In fact, the staff report notes that if the property is sold to a private entity, it would become taxable, so it hasn't been for a while now. Related to the rezoning, it is a satellite annexation, the city has applied zoning to it, and it's industrial today, 137 acres, undeveloped in a wooded state. It has challenges from an industrial use standpoint because of lack of infrastructure and challenges with access, and that's, in the last few years since we've had a number of requests and considerations for changing industrial property, we've noted the need for really good access to highway and good roadway access to and from a site to make it a viable industrial property. So we note the challenges here on this property. Like I said, the request would be to change it to a multifamily, high-density zoning category. We also note that the, although the comp plan recommends retaining industrial property, we note the challenges with this particular industrial property. And as with the current comp plan and the one we're working on, the Living Asheville Plan, we have a shortage of housing, and we'd like to deal with that as well. So working with Buncombe County, maybe we can do that. We did take this rezoning action and request to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they did review it, debated the topic a fair bit, and at the end voted to recommend an approval for the change to RM16 unanimously. So with that, I'll answer any questions for you. We also have my colleague from the county here, if you need any county-related questions answered.
I do have a question. We got, or at least I got, an email expressing some concern about traffic volume on a couple of these roads, not Brevard Road, but the two smaller roads. And so my question is, I know that for development in the city, that, I guess, I'm not sure what the threshold is, but at some point we require a traffic study or some analysis.
Correct.
The county, however, does not do that, so, but just to be clear, any development that goes in here, well, what is that threshold?
It's in the city.
It's in the city. It's a satellite annexation, so our regs apply.
So our regs would apply, and they would have to do a traffic study.
At 100 trips a peak hour, 100 vehicle trips in a peak hour. Also, any development that would happen here would also follow city development rules, and if it's a large development, it'll come back to council, potentially, depending on scale.
I don't know if this is relevant this far out on this, but is this along a stretch of the river where greenways anticipated to travel?
Yes, sir, and we have a greenway easement in place for the property.
Okay, I had forgotten where that was.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion? So that was the complete presentation, really. So do I have a motion for the first part, under number one, this is for removing the restriction for economic development purposes only?
Mayor, I'd move to approve the resolution to release the condition requiring use of the Buncombe County-owned property for economic development purpose, and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the inter-local agreement between the city and Henderson County regarding this property to delete this condition.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Does anyone want to comment on this motion? And please just state your name and watch the lights, you have three minutes.
My name is Sharon Canai, I live in the community, have lived there for 39 years. The neighboring, our neighbors are concerned about them rezoning this to a multi-high-density family property. I know it's going to go, I know that something's going to be built there, and we understand that. We wanted the chutes because we knew it would be park-like, but that didn't happen. But to do this and then to use, I know, we were at the city council meeting, they talked about coming up Ferry Road, that is an extremely narrow road. It's got a sharp curve at the beginning of it, it's also shaded in the winter, it does it, it's the last spot to melt. We have children that catch the bus where Ferry Road meets Brevard Road, there's school buses that come up and down through there. Numerous times I've been run off the road, I mean, it's just a very sharp curve. So we do have those concerns. We have concerns about, we have, right now we have six bear, we have numerous deer, turkeys, hundreds of those, and so we have concerns about them, they're already in our neighborhood, you know, and they create a little bit of havoc, we've learned to live with them. Only one of them is mean, so, you know, we...
Only one of the bears?
The bear, yeah.
How do you know you have six? I don't know how many I have.
Well, we checked with the wildlife commission, is the one that let us know that there were six of them.
I was just curious.
We have one that stays in our yard, I've had him in my yard numerous times. We've got the one that's mean, ran some, got a moa, I think it was, something like that.
He did what?
But anyway, that's the biggest concern, is the safety. If it were single-family, you know, like I said, we know that something's going to happen, it's going to get sold. We do have concerns, you know, as far as runoff, there are so many apartment buildings out on Brevard Road. It is crazy. Right now, the plans with the seven that are being built on Sardis Road, Brevard Road, Clayton Road, there's 2,174 planned apartment-built units for that area. If you calculate that by cars, by vehicles, that would be 3,261. If there's 1.5 car per person, you're going to have a lot of, you know, dual-income, single people, there are going to be two cars. Sometimes it takes 40 minutes to go six miles. If you get off of 40 and you go to Ferry Road, it has taken me as long as 40 minutes to travel that six miles. It's ridiculous. There is traffic backed up all the time, 26 backs up, so they come down Clayton Road, then they come out Brevard Road. Another concern is, these are going to be visible from the Parkway, the Parkway Bridge is right there. So I'm done.
If you have any other comments, though, you can, you can hand them to Maggie, and she'll pass them around to us, but if you don't have to do that.
Well, just that, single-family, we can, you know, we can understand that, but not multifamily, high-density, that's just too hard on the community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? And Mayor, keep in mind, you've still got a zoning public hearing, too. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Brittany Lepper. I don't have a lot of information on this, but I think we should wait to make a decision because she has a lot of good concerns. I don't think it should be what, not only be about what the multifamily high-density district will do badly for her neighborhood, but I think there's much more that we could do that would make Asheville more beautiful. And, I mean, we have a sustainability advisory committee on energy and the environment, and this is 137 acres that we can look to to do much more for Asheville than a high...
So just to be clear, this is owned by Buncombe County?
Okay. Regardless, I think we should wait to make this decision and have people research what we can do on it. I mean, I will go home and research and come back, but I don't think that this should be released today. I think the economic development purpose should stay, and I don't think that it should be rezoned today.
Thanks.
That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? No, okay, we have a motion and a second, any other questions or comments from members of council? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, the second item, I'm going to open the public hearing, this is A2, a public hearing to rezone the property located at 1568 Brevard Road from industrial district to RM16 residential multifamily high-density district. This is the same property, this is sort of just the second part of this piece. I'm opening the public hearing on this rezoning, is there anyone wishing to speak? I'm going to close the public hearing on this item, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the rezoning request for 1568 Brevard Road from industrial district to residential multifamily high-density district, and find that the request is reasonable, is within the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the site is a suitable location for housing development, which is needed in the community. Two, the site as is, does not have suitable infrastructure for industrial use. And in addition, would note that any future development that will go there will be coming before this body for deliberation as to appropriateness, scale, et cetera, assuming it meets the threshold.
Well, if it's a multifamily over 50 units, that's right, it will.
So that's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Alan, you're doing all of the items on the public hearings agenda tonight. So item B is a public hearing to consider a series of text amendments to Article 8 of the Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to development standards for the Haywood Road Form Code found in Section 7-8-28 to include a new HR 7-traditional community, district, and district standards. And Alan has an extra tough job explaining this tonight because Joel, who's leaving, confused everybody in the paper today about what we're doing tonight. Not, not, you always do that, but sometimes we do.
Usually, yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council, members of the public, I'll try to clarify the issues we're looking at tonight. The Haywood Road Form District was actually adopted by city council about three years ago, and so the bulk of the work that we've done to bring an amendment to you all was what I would consider to be sort of maintenance of a zoning code based on things you learn in the community from property owners and folks who are trying to use the ordinance. And so they bring questions to staff, and they take things to the board of adjustment because the code isn't flexible enough, or it creates challenges from the practical use of the zoning code itself. So our work has been, for me, in the last few years, was to kind of study the development and formation of this ordinance, and see how it worked, kept a big list of things people were kind of commonly having questions about. And so this is the, the bulk of the items tonight, have two other items to cover as well. So a number of these are really kind of like what I call a redline changes, and they're things to clarify how to use this code and what we intend to happen here as we develop and renovate existing buildings on Haywood Road. So there's a number of these redline changes. In this case, I'm showing you a build-to zone, and we're trying to build in a little more flexibility to that. For example, we need some accommodation for driveway widths, and we need to clarify how staff is supposed to work with the lot, but also provide for access to the property, so we're kind of defining... So we're kind of defining that sort of thing. So a number of, of the changes in this code would be in the category of, of red line changes to hopefully make the code easier to use and more successful. None of the changes that I, uh, I'm, I'm showing you right at this moment would do anything to change the vision of what Haywood Road was meant to do with, with that long community development process that we went through. Another example would be a red line change would be a setback detail. Um, it's noted on page seventeen of the ordinance, and it provides greater options for, for building stepbacks, and stepbacks are really to, um, to, to ensure that air and light reach the street, not overwhelm the streetscape. But we have some other issues with overhead power lines, things that are inflexible and are very difficult to work around, and so we took a, uh, one or two cases where we actually had a board of adjustment variance because someone couldn't build into the setback area because of overhead power lines. We needed to clarify that for Haywood Road, since it's not an uncommon occurrence on Haywood Road. So that's sort of one, another example of the nature of these changes. Because there's six districts along Haywood Road, um, there's a number of standards for each district, and so I have some red line changes for those as well, and they affect things of how the building, uh, where the building is located on the site, um, the build-two zone percentage areas, um, uh, setback flexibility, and things like transparency, which really is saying windows, doors, and other openings, making those a little more flexible. In addition to that, um, the, the code also specifies building heights, and so sometimes, the code was requiring twelve, twelve feet between floors, and which is a little bit of a hardship when you have very small structure, you have very high ceilings, a lot of stairs to get to the second floor. So we wanted to make that a little more flexible, and that's based on feedback from the community. And then finally, um, we, let's see. Well, um, I also wanted to share with you, um, the second thing. So in September, when we brought these big lists to you all for consideration, um, you all, as council asked staff to, um, to focus on the area below Beecham's Curve. And this area is currently HR five live work, and just to orient you, this is, uh, the French Broad River, we cross the bridge here, and at the top here is Beecham's Curve, and we've seen a, um, a lot of great new renovation, reinvestment, new restaurants activity in this area. So the question was about HR five live work, and, uh, at our September meeting, council was concerned that we were expanding opportunities for, for lodging facilities. So, um, instead of, um, our original request was, or consideration was to rezone to HR four traditional, which does permit lodging facilities, that staff create this new seventh district. And so what I wanted to do with this, um, this version tonight, or this, uh, what we've added to this red line changes is a new HR seven. What this is showing is that it's going to act and behave a lot like, um, the HR four traditional in scale, formatting, um, standards for the, the code itself, uh, would apply to both areas, Beecham's Curve and down to the river, except that we would not permit lodging in this use, uh, lodging facilities in this location. So this is, um, several areas of the, of the code itself. Uh, the use table includes a new seventh, HR seven district, and so there's a, a number of uses that kind of mirror HR four traditional. Uh, we've added that to the code since September. Uh, we've also, uh, wanted to point out to you that we have, um, for lodging facilities, um, we've obviously left any permitted uses off, that would include lodging facilities. Now, it still permits the things that we all fairly agree on, which is the bed breakfast inn or the, um, the homestay. Those are other options that we allow citywide, and so they would still be allowed on Haywood Road, uh, but we've taken it out, HR seven, per council direction. Um, the final big item that council asked staff to do in September was to, to evaluate, to reconsider the appropriateness of lodging facilities in the rest of the ordinance, in the rest of the district, I'm sorry to say. This, this, this correction today, the red line here, means really we're, we're bringing in what staff, uh, what council approved in February. Uh, council changed the thresholds for, for lodging facilities, twenty-one guestrooms and more, always come to council, that's citywide. So this code didn't reflect that, um, in, in February, we didn't make that change, we didn't show it. Uh, it, it applied to Haywood Road, but it didn't show it very clearly, so we wanted to correct that with this change. But what we've really done here is just pointed out that, um, uh, twenty guestrooms or less would be permitted in the core area, expansion area, the corridor area, and the, um, HR four traditional area, and the HR six town. And that's because they already are permitted, they're permitted today, and those ordinances wanted to specify that. At the September meeting, um, council asked staff to go back to planning zoning commission and consider the appropriateness of maintaining or keeping that lodging facilities in the rest of the, this, these other areas, in, in addition to HR seven. So what we did is we took it back to the planning zoning commission in, in early November, so November first. We also discussed this with the West Asheville Business Association for council agreement, that we would take it back with them. West Asheville Business feels like this is a use that would help small business on Haywood Road. Um, when we took it to the planning zoning commission, uh, they did wrestle with it some, they discussed it a lot, and in the end, they voted to, um, recommend sending the copy that you have in front of you back to you all for consideration, which means keeping, um, lodging facilities, uh, as they are here. Twenty units or less would still be allowed. So I know that, um, part of the discussion or concern has been short-term rentals on Haywood Road and, 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 you know, but that was that threshold that was established in February. So when we did advertising for this public meeting tonight, we did include the language that would permit council to make a, a different decision tonight. You could change this tonight if you, if you chose to do so, and so the options there, back to you all. Um, so just the finalization of this, I guess, is, um, I'm kind of, mayor, I'm kind of wrapping two summaries together here, if you will, but, uh, this other rezoning is kind of tied to a wording amendment, and that would be the request to, um, take the properties below Beecham's Curve here, down to the river.
You're morphing into item C on the public hearings agenda, because they are the...
Yeah. And, and these two, um, this area was, was left out and, and sort of intentionally, um, considered for live work because it, there was a sense that there may not be enough energy on Haywood Road to have success there. You might have gapped properties, you know, things that never got renovated, no new energy went there, and if you stretched out the commercial opportunities along the whole section of Haywood Road, it might result in some areas not, not, uh, doing very well. So that was, uh, during the, the two thousand fourteen approval process, um, we, we went with the live work as an option here. Well, since then, lots changed, and, and the growth in activity has followed, uh, the corridor all the way down to the river, and New Belgium's helped with that. And so, um, if, if it was changed to the new HR seven, if you all moved forward with all these amendments, it would allow a variety of commercial uses, one to three stories, um, throughout that section of the corridor, except not permitting, um, lodging facilities. So with that, um, I can answer any questions for you if I, if you have any formating.
Questions?
I would just have a comment. So today, uh, talking to some city staff, uh, I've asked that PED relook at the lodging facility exception, you know, the twenty guestrooms or less, across the city, not just at, um, and so they've told me that PED will look at that question, um, in December and possibly January, and that council will be able to look at that in the aggregate as opposed to, you know, kind of picking out individual areas like this to, um, eliminate the exception for lodging facilities for the twenty guestrooms or less. So, um, I, it's just something that I think we've all, or there's some consensus that maybe this twenty guestroom or less exception across the city should be reconsidered.
Any, uh, any other comments? We're, I can open, if there's no other questions for Alan to clear for, I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Item B. Well, we'll have another item C, but, okay. Know the drill, say your name, three minutes, watch the lights.
Good evening, Austin Walker. Uh, I am here today as the president of West Asheville Business Association. I, I believe I was mentioned in the, the report, uh, and I, you know, am, am here to implore you guys to listen to staff recommendation and planning zoning recommendation regarding, uh, retaining lodging twenty units or less as a permitted use on Haywood Road. We do, Wawa, West Asheville Business Association, Wawa, does support, uh, the rezoning at the, at the, um, river end of the district. However, we do implore you to retain the lodging up on the upper side. And the main reason we do is that, there's several reasons, but, um, this zoning, unlike a lot of zoning in the city, there, there was, uh, a lot of community visioning that went into that. In fact, the last time I was in front of you was, uh, when the council, uh, accepted the vision of Haywood Road, um, as the, the bedrock for what the community wanted over there. And that vision was, uh, a work of fourteen years or so, ten to fourteen years of community, public input sessions. Uh, most of it was actually facilitated by Alan, and I commend Alan for his work on that. That vision is what the community wants, and that is a commercial corridor, and if there was any place for lodging in that community, that would be the spot for it. And the businesses are very, very excited about lodging over there. We don't have lodging over there. Uh, the lodging that is over there has spread into the neighborhoods, and, and, and that is a separate issue altogether than, than what we're talking about tonight with the lodging on a commercial corridor in a district that has, goes along with the vision of the community. Uh, the other thing that I would mention is that, you know, Haywood Road was, was first into this form-based code thing, you know, it was innovative. It was done elsewhere, uh, in the country, sure, but it was first place in, in Asheville, which is great. Uh, that code is form-based, not use-based. So it, the, the form was, was determined by the community, and it was, it spelled out beautifully. I think Alan's doing a great job to manage those expectations in, in terms of how it's actually applied when rubber meets the road, but, um, it is form-based, not use-based, and it should remain such. Uh, the, the, I think it's important to understand that the, the Wawa members, uh, Wawa has been around since nineteen fifty. Uh, it is a, a group of businesses in West Asheville, and, um, we as, uh, an association ask you guys to retain lodging as a permitted use. Thank you.
Perfect.
Good evening, my name's Michael Buttram. I'm representing the Land of the Sky Association of Realtors, um, which next Thursday will hit nineteen hundred and eighty members in Asheville, so it's, uh, become significant in size, for sure. I'm here, though, about private property rights, uh, specifically Haywood Road corridor, and maybe more specifically drilling down to short-term rentals. Um, the, um, we've posed a question to our association whereby is a restriction or a regulation a taking in a different form? And, uh, the idea, of course, comes from the standpoint, if it's not the case here, it's not a problem today, uh, since you're not using it for public purpose, and you're not offering any compensation because you're not doing it. However, we don't know what the future holds, and what if you set up a future council that needs to take it for proper compensation, but you have restricted the value by restricting the rental value of it? Now you're into a dilemma. What is it worth? And that's something that I'm hopefully going to point out that, uh, some of the issues here. Um, and, and whatever is decided, particularly if it's restricted, there's going to be clever people circumventing it in about thirty minutes, which is unfortunately what's going on right now with the current one. Um, so again, it's something to consider. We gave the council, on two occasions, what we refer to by a colleague of mine from California, a common sense approach to short-term rentals written by the city of Golita, California, uh, which is a greater part of Santa Barbara, an area. Golita's about fifty thousand. They have a short-term rental ordinance that's allowed, and, uh, it makes sense. It's properly regulated, it offers revenue streams properly to both the city as well as the people that own the property, the private property, and I would urge you to reconsider, at least look at it, from the standpoint of whether or not it would be helpful for you. Also, I think a lot of the complaints that take place, um, with short-term rentals are really long-term ones. When you ask the professionals that manage these properties, there's far greater problems with long-term rentals than there are short-term rentals, far greater, which puts you into the enforcement business, um, and, you know, and it's a problem for the city, and it's a problem for the owner. I think it's confused between short-term and long-term, and I think the, the problems with short-term, certainly there are some, but not nearly the amount of long-term rentals, which are allowed. Um, I think the people on Haywood Corridor would probably prefer, as, as he points out, to allow this and invite people to Asheville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, uh, my name is Christopher Fink, and I'm representing my neighbors in Brucemont Circle in regard to this, uh, matter. And what, though none of us are zoning experts, uh, the, the overriding concern we have is to advocate for the continued development of West Asheville as a community and not a recreation zone. Uh, we're hoping that, as you think about the zoning application, that it be done with a mind toward encouraging community business development and community use. Uh, many of us who have lived in other places that have benefited from forward-thinking zoning activities, uh, know a lot the difference between recreation zone development and the benefit for those who are eager to have lodging in the predominance of recreation businesses in, uh, in hospitality-oriented recre, uh, restaurants, bars, coffee houses and the like. Good place for those in the community, but in, in some, what we're hoping is to maintain a community that supports a living, uh, community of residents as opposed to visitors, and that doesn't exclude visitors coming and enjoying our community, but it places the priority on, uh, a residential community development over a recreation community development. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And, uh, I think that the HR four traditional would be just fine. I don't see a reason to create the, the, uh, HR seven to, uh, restrict the, uh, property owner's rights to do what they want to do as far as short-term rentals, because that part of the corridor, on the corridor there, it's not going to bother any of the neighborhoods. Uh, there's no way it's going to really bother anybody because the way that's laid, there's no houses, it's up straight up a bank up on the hill there, and, uh, I think it, the, uh, lodging should be permitted, and you shouldn't restrict that, uh, because I just think it hurts the value of the property for the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else?
I would, I would like to say something.
Okay, so let me, just confirming, no one else wants to speak on this? I'm going to close the public hearing. Last chance, no regrets, okay?
Um, being that, it seems that we have support for removing the twenty-room threshold in the future, uh, I would like to encourage council tonight to remove lodging from the entire Haywood Road, and we're not banning lodging, we're removing it as a right. Folks could still seek council permission, uh, to apply for lodging, but if we did, if we took it out tonight, uh, before we have a chance to remove the twenty-room threshold, we could see these pop up in the coming months prior to changing threshold. Um, so I would, I would like us to consider passing this with lodging removed. So I would like us to consider passing this with lodging removed.
I'm just having to give my brain, like, a chance to adjust to this, because Gwen is saying, wait, let's look at a comprehensive look, and you're saying, go ahead. So, okay, how about over here?
Yeah, I, Brian, I'm with you on that. I won't, I won't repeat everything that I said two weeks ago about having the same conversation for the River Arts District, but, you know, except to say that I realize that we're sort of breaking the rules on form versus use and that we're, we, to some degree, are not respecting the very long process, Austin, that you talked about that went through, that we went through to develop this form-based code. I will also, though, quote our assistant planning director who opened this presentation by saying that most of what's being proposed here is based on, is, our change is based on things that we've learned in the community. And what we've learned in this community is that affordability is only an increasing problem, and that short-term rentals are only an increasing problem. Illegal short-term rentals are only an increasing problem. And I am not, I don't, I, I think we need to have a laser focused on that, and the communities that are suffering from affordability issues are clamping down more on short-term rentals. And to Brian's point, this is not prohibiting them. This simply says if you want to build a short-term rental facility on the spine of Haywood Road in West Asheville, you need to come talk to us. And what we have found with, I think, the 20-room-plus threshold is, in the last year, since we put that in place, is that that has gotten us better projects than we would have gotten otherwise. And so I don't see any reason that this wouldn't, that that wouldn't be the case with this as well. So when the time comes, I have some language.
You just made a motion. That was very comprehensive.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Before we get a second on that motion, this is, these are very taxing conversations in trying to be pragmatic about, you know, where do you go on this, especially with the 20-room threshold. I think that when we did that, that was, in my mind, that was more or less for larger-scale hotels, not short-term rentals. When you start thinking about short-term rentals, there are merits on both sides of this argument, and to be able to come in and just kind of pick these things apart as we go from corridor to corridor is still not something that I'm willing to do. I'm going to support the form-based code tonight, but in the hopes that the next iteration of council will significantly take a look at this and make a really pragmatic view on how do we, how do we regulate this? I mean, people are doing short-term rentals whether we want them to or not. That's already been seen. As far as short-term rentals affecting affordable housing, I mean, there are anecdotes out there that short-term rentals don't affect affordable housing in the sense of if it's a short-term rental, is it in the neighborhood that you're going to have an affordable housing unit in? Is it someone who's going to want to do that long-term? How do we know that that's what the owner of that individual property is going to want to do? Because we say you can't do a short-term rental, that doesn't necessarily make it, make it that you're going to make a long-term rental out of that that's affordable. I can't say that the owner of a property is going to do that. How do we look at all these things? I'm not saying they're right or wrong, but I still think it deserves more comprehensive look than what we're giving it now. It just seems like we're just throwing darts at a dartboard, just popping balloons. But I'm going to support this with the hopes that the next council will really take a serious look at short-term rentals and the comprehensiveness of how we deal with them across the city, and whether or not they really do affect affordable housing. I don't know.
And I agree with the idea of sending the bigger question to PED. I mean, I think there is, but this is in front of us, just like the RAD zoning was in front of us, and it's an opportunity to take, take some steps. So I have a motion.
Yeah, you want to do the opposed? Okay. Ready, go.
So here's my motion. I move to approve the Haywood Form, Haywood Road Form-Based Code Amendment with the additional amendment to exclude lodging facilities of all types from all districts in the Haywood Form-Based Code. And find that there are-
Is that, if we're having doubts about whether that's the right reading of the-
It's not all types.
You don't want all types. Well, it's that. It's lodging. It's lodging. You're not going to have any lodging in there without a CZ. Right. So it is, it is a lodging facility, 21 rooms or more, 21 rooms or less.
Yeah, it's confusing because the whole category is-
Lodging facility. Lodging facility. Yeah, I write it for it. It's my deal, but I want to make sure it covers 21 or more and 20 or less of any, of any rooms, of any number.
Start again. Say lodging facility.
I think I did. If I didn't, I'll say it louder. I move to approve the Haywood Road Form-Based Code Amendment with the additional amendment to exclude lodging facilities of all types from all districts in the Haywood Form-Based Code, Haywood Form Code, and find that the request is reasonable and is in the public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. Number one, the code amendment will encourage infill development and vibrant mixed-use neighborhoods. And two, the amendment will facilitate the implementation of the code.
Second.
Do I get one last chance to talk about STRs? Because I'm never going to talk about it again after tonight.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Second to that.
Do we have a second? Or just Gwen did it.
The form-based code process, it's been set up here before, a really comprehensive, excellent process, lots of community input. And since its completion, we've seen the emergence of the seriousness of the STR issue across the city of Asheville. So it has become an emergent issue, and I think that if we were doing the form-based code today, it would be one of those things that was kind of long debated during the process. But the fact is that these issues have emerged, and we are, as a body, responding. I would also say that the corridor is a neighborhood. Mr. Walker has apartments, excellent apartments there on Haywood Road. Bledsoe Building has apartments, St. Joan of Arc Apartments. This is a neighborhood. And not only that, but the separation between the corridor and the neighborhood proper is such a thin line, if it's a line at all, that even now, all of the traffic from the commercial corridors flooded into the neighborhoods. So I would say that the corridor issues are the neighborhood issues, that to say that they're separate is, I think it ignores the reality. To underscore Councilwoman Mayfield's point, this is not a ban. This is a removal of the use by right. The conditional zoning process remains available for all applicants. And if you got something that you want to put on Haywood Road that is going to be, it looks like it's in a really good spot, it's going to serve the businesses, and the neighbors are cool with it, I think this body will be open to considering that. There's not a closed mind on this board, or I'm assuming the next one. As far as not doing something because there's people who are going to break the rules, that's like, well, let's do away with speed limits then. You know, that'll, that'll take care of it. It'll take care of itself if we don't have the speed limits. I just don't buy it. I think that we're still learning how to enforce this, and I don't know if it'll get to perfect, but I think it'll get to better as services emerge and as we as, as we as a municipal government get better at this kind of enforcement. I think we're not good at it yet. I think we're getting better at it every single day, though. And then more broadly, I'm looking forward to watching from afar as PD and then this council discusses what to do on all the commercial, in all the commercial districts across the city on this. I think Keith is right, that it's time to have a more comprehensive take on this. And it's, I started talking about, two years ago, about how it's looking at the Central Business District in this regard. And at the time, there hadn't been a lot of appetite for it, but I think that as we've seen these condo projects emerge that are STRs, that are essentially hotels masquerading as condos, that it's time. It's just time for us to respond to this stuff. Downtown is also a neighborhood. Ask Darn. We are a city of neighborhoods, and I think there's some places where this use might be really appropriate, and I'll look forward to hearing where you all decide those are. And to go ahead and look at that broadly is important, but for tonight, this is in front of us. And it's an opportunity for us to take a really strong stance on saying that we're going to make sure that our residents are going to come first. The neighborhood along the new section that we're doing from Womble down to the river, as far as that gully goes there, having been a resident of that neighborhood for, I lived 14 years, every noise carries across that gully. So if you end up with a row of short-term party houses on that road, so people walk down to the burrows, guarantee that every neighbor in that neighborhood is going to have to contend with them. So just going to throw that little, throw a little cold water on, I'm going to comment there. So anyway, I appreciate the time and the, and the thoughtful deliberation of this body over several iterations as we wrestled with this over and over. I understand the frustration of us having to deal with it over and over, but it's been really complicated, and everyone's patience and the community's willingness to share with us your perspectives, I think it's been a good process.
Gordon, you made some really good points. I agree with a lot of that. I really do. I think, I'm by far, I am not a lobbyist for Airbnb or short-term rentals or anything like that, so that's just, that's not what, what I think I bring to this conversation. I think when you start talking about people who do short-term rentals, if we not make it a use by right, that they'll either come to us or they'll do a long-term rental, is a, I don't know, I think it's kind of fickle to look at that and think that that's how it's going to play out. I think you can't make Asheville, North Carolina Beer City, USA, and then complain about the fallout. I think you have to, I think you have to really try to look at this in a more pragmatic way. So hopefully we'll have, we'll continue these conversations, and we'll, I'm not necessarily sure we'll have a perfect bow to put on it when it's all said and done. I don't think it's all said and done now. I don't think anybody on either side of this issue is going to be happy with whatever results we have. You know, we had some task force in the past about short-term rentals and things, and we figured we wrapped it up then, but of course that doesn't seem like the case now. And if you want to come back and join us, please do. But we-
Pretty much from the cheap seats.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we've got a work cut out for us, and at the end of the day, nobody's going to be 100% happy when it, when it's all done. So hopefully we can figure it out.
I would, since we're discussing all this again, I'd like to interject that for those of you who support short-term rental, particularly of accessory dwellings, I count four votes on the new council who'll be in favor. So I think the policy is very likely to change in the course of rationalizing the policy. I predict that they're going to end up banning whole-house rentals citywide and permitting accessory dwelling units, at least by my count of the new council.
Anybody else have anything to add? Okay, we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then we have, we have, this is just the section south of, below. Do you want to just do a quick presentation?
We're doing C.
We didn't do the public hearing on this one? No. We had to separate these out.
It might help, too, if you explain to them what the differences of this new, remind them perhaps what they're rezoning it to. I had the question about what, once you took out the short-term rentals, you know, what this rezoning would do, so this is, yeah.
So HR5 live-work does not permit a variety of commercial and business uses. It's focused really on residential uses with a very small smattering of studio and sort of home occupation type of live-work type of uses. Should you change the zoning here? Folks in the, with these properties could do a fuller range of commercial activity here. Now, what I must say is HR4 and HR7 are practically identical because now there's no difference in the lodging. But we might need to deal with that at a later date if, but depending on how the conversation goes in the future with short-term rentals and other issues, we might have the need to maintain HR7. So we'll, we'll wait to see how that goes. But just to show you the land use table, this column here, I'm going to zoom out a little more in there. The column on the far right is the HR7. It permits a wide variety of housing types. It provides a lot of allowance for public and institutional uses. It would allow some food and beverage activity here. It would also include a wider range of retail and services. I'm pointing to this category here, office and those sorts of things for this section of Haywood Road. The difference, the interesting part of this section of Haywood Road is that properties here cannot really benefit from the on-street parking that is actually available in other portions of Haywood Road. The corridor is pretty tight, we just don't have a lot of room, so pretty much everyone is going to be providing, the scale of development will be scaled to the size of a lot without any additional ability to use the on-street parking or other, you know, sort of community services in that area alone. So that's, that's kind of a reality for these properties. That's slightly unique. I think the scale of development will be moderated for that reason. But any other questions, I'll have an answer for you.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the zoning map amendment from HR5 live-work district to HR7 traditional community district with the other amendment that we talked about earlier on for Haywood Street, and find the-
It's already in there.
It's already in there. Oh, it's, okay. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in that, one, opportunities for commercial investment and redevelopment are enhanced; two, buffering requirements are in place to protect residential areas; and three, the HR5 live-work district is no longer the most appropriate zoning for this area. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. That concludes our public hearings agenda. We have, thank you, Alan, for doing all those items. We have no items under unfinished business. We have one item of new business, and Nikki Reed is going to talk to us about that.
Okay, I'm going, my name is Nikki Reed, real estate program director. We've received an unsolicited offer to purchase property that the city owns along Broadway, and so I'm going to summarize some of the key points from the staff report about the deal. So the parcel that you see on the screen, it's about .38 acres zoned neighborhood corridor district. The city came to own it via NC DOT. NC DOT purchased a lot of property along Broadway during the widening project and also purchased some property for Reed Creek Greenway. And so that's how the city came to own that property, and you'll see the Reed Creek Greenway is fully constructed to the rear on a separate parcel there. So the gas station closed a couple of years ago, and at that time, a new owner bought it and then came to the city requesting to purchase its property. So it's a small site, but in effort to leverage the sale of the property to achieve affordable housing goals, the following deal points were put together. First is the offer of a purchase price at $115,000. That is based on an appraisal that assumes certain restrictions on the property. And also with that is the agreement of an affordable housing deed restriction that requires the construction of a minimum of eight units or 20% of the total build-out of a new development at 60% AMI for 25 years. So, and actually, in follow-up to the review with the HCD committee, the developer has also agreed to restrict short-term rental on the property for a period of 25 years also. So, and one more thing, due to the fact that the developer has agreed to these affordable housing restrictions, then the city has the ability to do a direct sale rather than put the property up for upset bids. So this can be done as a direct sale due to that affordable housing deed restriction. Also, I'd like to point out that we have representatives of the purchaser here tonight if you have any questions for them, but otherwise I can answer your questions.
Any questions? Okay. Do I have a, this one, we need a motion and a second, and then I can ask for any.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to convey real property located at 427 Broadway Street to Reed Creek Greenway Plaza LLC, subject to specific affordable housing, housing and short-term rental deed restrictions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? Okay. Oh, okay.
I just really want to thank Hans, your willingness to work with city staff and to come forward and to really help. I think that your, the 32 units, or, you know, however it shakes out exactly, are going to be really helpful, but especially these eight units of housing that will be affordable to people at 60% of area median income is going to meet such an important need, and your willingness to come forward with this is exactly- your willingness to come forward with this is exactly the kind of partnership that this body asks for again and again, and, and your willingness to come forward, it's just, it means a lot, and I couldn't be more grateful.
I'll, I'll be 63 when the 25 years is up, 63 or 64, so I'll check back in then and see if we can't get another 25.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I don't have anyone signed up to speak at the, at the end here, under public comment. Is there anyone wishing to provide the yes? Yes, yes, then yes.
Hi, Peter Laitis, I live downtown, first of all, and I'm a member of DARN, so thank you, a shout-out. Secondly, a question more than anything else, is it within the council's power to declare a temporary moratorium on STRs while this whole issue is decided?
We don't allow really complicated legal questions during public comment. But talk to our lawyer, okay. Well, I can, there are provisions in the general statutes that allow moratoriums under certain circumstances, so I think that's 168, 381, so if council were to consider it, that would be the provision that they turn to.
I bet there's a blog post about it at the School of Government's website.
Well, the reason I ask is that I think that there are several projects that are being considered downtown that may be stalking horses for STRs, and by the time you get around to actually putting the restrictions, whatever they might be in place, it might be too late for whatever's been added on. So again, if you could do a temporary that would allow you not, not to make a permanent decision zoning, might give you the leeway to, to consider. Thank you.
My name is Brittany Leopard. I have two points of decorum and two questions of how we conduct business. My main point is I felt really disrespected that I was interrupted during my three minutes. Red tape shouldn't impede innovation, and my point wasn't about who owned the land, it was about what we could do with it in Buncombe County, and the city can communicate with each other. So that point, I feel that when we come up here, we have to listen to everyone talk, so in my three minutes, I don't want to be interrupted. Also, I was unfair that Moody Investors Services was allowed to go well over their 10-minute time while Shannon came here to talk about her neighborhood and was cut off right at her three minutes. I don't want anyone to be over their time if someone else won't be let over their time. My question is about consent agenda and the minutes. I was wondering if the minutes could be posted before the next meeting, so we have time to research it and come prepared. I've only seen on there that it's from the past one, and I can't really do anything about that, so I'd like to see maybe a link to a minute for the next meeting before December 19th, if that's possible. And I also have a question about the consent agenda. Whenever that's already on the minutes for this meeting and I come in, is that something that public comment is allowed on? Because I had issue with numbers I and L, but I didn't know if that's something that we can comment on publicly or not. Is it, it is?
So, so you're, we're still doing your three minutes.
Okay, so, okay. That was rude also, because that was clearly a question. So this is a question.
Yes.
Mrs. Mannheimer, can, moving forward during the consent agenda, can we go through each item and ask if anyone here has anything to say about it before you all approve them as a whole?
So the way the consent agenda is done is it is a motion for all the items on the consent agenda, unless anyone on council wants to take an individual item off and consider it separately. And today, two items were removed to be considered separately. So then there was a motion for all the items on the consent agenda minus those two, and the public was invited to comment.
On any of them.
On any of them. So that would have been, whenever you said, would have been the thing. Okay, just as speaking on my behalf and maybe other people here, I would like to see each item, like, does anyone have anything to say about item A, item B, because that makes it easier for us to come forward and speak about them. It doesn't feel like we're being rushed out, or like it's all being swept under the rug. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I apologize for interrupting you during your comments. I do sometimes interrupt speakers if they are saying things that are incorrect, because I don't want the public to get misinformation. Anyone else wishing to provide comment? Nope, okay. Okay, so this is a bittersweet night, because we're saying goodbye to Gordon and Cecil. We are going to officially say goodbye to you, though, however, at the swearing-in ceremony on December 5th, when you will come back for, for the formal goodbye and the formal hello for the new council members.
Okay. Anybody who's still watching out there, thank you for the opportunity to serve this city for eight years. It's been a really interesting experience, and I wouldn't miss it for the world.
Interesting is a good word.
I'll echo my thanks, and I'll save the bulk of my remarks for December 5th, when I intend to hold forth at some length.
Maybe we can rethink that.
It's a 45-minute limit.
You've got a limit.
Okay, we don't have a closed session, so we are adjourned.